We'll call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Harrison County Board of Education, although it's a week early to avoid the week of Christmas for December 14th, 2021. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Devine.
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, which extends one nation, united, indivisible, liberating, just as for all.
Brings us down to special recognitions and presentations. And tonight, we're honored to have the South Harrison High School Future Farmers of America. And I think I speak for the entire board when we say it's a very well-run program and you always come here and make us proud. So with that, Madam Superintendent and Mr. Dogree.
Oh, very nice.
Is there?
Do you want to do the table? I flipped them. It's not more than one.
Oh, okay.
And this is Mr. Lockhart's. And this can, you can read his, leave all three of the certificates there.
All right.
Okay. I'm going to begin this first. Yes.
All right.
All right.
I'll be your man.
Okay. You know what I really appreciate is look how large the print is. I can read it without glasses. South Harrison's Future Farmers of America group says they had a very busy year. So we've been fortunate to have this group in and our future farmers for South Harrison here often. The board and superintendent would recognize the various teams of students under the name of Mr. John Lockhart. And we have Dr. Moore here as well. And then Heidi Griffith also because she oversees TT. South Harrison High School has won three state championships this year. And the following are the teams worthy of recognition. I think we're going to start out with the state champion dairy cattle judging team. That's the top one there. Let's see if the names match.
Well, those are all.
State champion.
Well, what you'll do is read their names out all together and read the gift certificate.
Well, let me just go ahead and ream them. We have the dairy, this is the cattle judging team, placed 12th out of 90 teams. That's amazing. At the World Dairy Expo International Competition, US and Canada. And then we also have the state champion nursery landscape team. They placed ninth in the national contest. But it was the first ever top 10 team from West Virginia. And then we have the state champion Farm Bureau Quiz Bowl competition. And it was West Virginia Farm Bureau's second annual Quiz Bowl competition held at the WBE Resort and Conference Center. And they did a whole range of questions that looks like anywhere from general agriculture to farm safety, the Western Constitution, farm support, and the legislative process. So just speaking from a mother that had a child in the FFA, I can't say enough about the leadership and the types of things that you guys are exposed to and what a learning opportunity and a way for the kids to grow. So we appreciate you having them so active in FFA. So let's get to the business and recognize the kids. How about?
Well, I think this is John Lockhart. He's good. So this was first place for West Virginia Nursery Landscape Team Competition, first place for cattle dairy judging team competition, and first place for state West Virginia Farm Bureau Quiz Bowl Competition.
These are all for the instructors. Thomas, do you'd like to come up here?
Ashley Martin. Dairy cattle judging team. Very good. Congratulations.
Do you want to just stay up here?
Yeah. It is Lakota Wilson. The Farm Bureau, first place in the West Virginia Farm Bureau Quiz Bowl Competition. Congrats. That is awesome. Katie Rogers.
She's not here.
All right.
She won, what, she won a first place in the dairy cattle judging.
Yeah. Now, this is James Radcliffe.
He's at wrestling practice.
Well, he's got first place for dairy cow and the West Virginia Nursery Landscape Team.
Wow.
That's awesome. Hope Woods.
No, he's at basketball practice.
What happened?
Sneaky, sneaky. First place for the landscape and for the Quiz Bowl. Madison? Yeah. Madison judging. First place for the dairy cow judging team and, oh man, we've got a bunch on here. First place for the nursery landscape team and first place for the Quiz Bowl. You're all bad, aren't you? Congratulations.
Spitzer?
Yeah, he's not here.
Man.
He's the only one we're not sure where he is.
Well, Spitzer did an awesome job as well. I mean, all of you did. Such a great competition. But this is the dairy cattle, the landscaping, and the Quiz Bowl. Great job. Congratulations, guys. Very good. You got a Quiz Bowl. Stay right here. Yeah. Open it up so that everyone can see. One of them.
Just one of them.
That's right. But you've got a whole stack. A whole. Thank you.
Are you taking our mask in or what?
You want, you can.
You were taking a picture. Take your mask.
You want to take it off for a second for your picture? You're welcome.
All right, guys. Look over here.
Really rich.
How about Dr. Moore?
Oh, yeah, we should have had Dr. Moore.
Dr. Moore, get up here.
Heidi, if you would.
Come on.
Just get right there in the middle.
Yeah.
You got to leave that one off.
Do you need me leaving one? What do you guys think? What do you guys, do you want the mask on?
They want it.
How could you cover that beauty?
I did with a mask.
Great job, guys.
Thank you. Yeah. Hey, John, please take off. I think I have those off.
Thank you for bringing your kids in to visit with us.
It's a real pleasure.
We didn't mention that. Yes. You, when you're going on the kind of masks, special recognition.
Mr. President, if I can, since we're still in special recognitions and presentations, I think it's important to note, even though you've got them scheduled for January, but the Bridgeport High School Cheerleaders and the Robert C. Byrd High School Cheerleaders both won their first place in their state tournaments. I think that those athletes deserve to be recognized. And I know you're going to bring them in in January, but I think it's important that we make note that being that it was this past weekend, that we give them the accolade they deserve.
Absolutely. And I believe Robert C. Byrd, this is their seventh state title.
Yeah.
We talked to the administrators today about their teams and they work hard. They work hard to get there.
It was six of them. And I think they was running up and then come back and want to get.
And then triple A.
All right, that brings us down to delegations. Do we have any delegations? No delegation. Superintendent's update.
Mr. President, I really have nothing to add.
We just met last week.
Yeah, we have. That's all right.
That's understandable.
Mr. President, I mentioned something.
Sure.
After I mentioned last week, a lot has been on my mind. I had mentioned during the meeting about the vending league field and about the Miracle Network. And it's been something that has not left me. And what I would like to do is possibly work with the community through the school award in the whole back area of the Nutter Ford Grade School, realizing that we have, that's the largest population for disabled students is at Nutter Ford. And I also look at it as an aspect from a parent's view that, you know, the thing, when my brain broke, it was something that was there my whole life. It could have broken when my kids were very young. I just was lucky and I'm thankful. But I can't take them to a playground. I don't, I don't want to get emotional, but I just think it gets, they can't play basketball. They can't, you know, they aren't with peers because they aren't able to get to a field. They don't get to play baseball. And I just really, it's something that I've become very passionate about and would like to work with the community.
And if you would.
Take that off the record.
And if you would, if you want to go out, have you stuffed up the 4H Center lately?
No, I haven't.
They have a, they have a handicap playground there that they installed. So let's take a look at it. I mean, because it may.
Well, this would be, it's not only for the students and why.
Oh, no, I understand.
But it is the perfect place is because, not only because of the population up there, but we have parking up there and the kids are there. They can, the whole entire school can utilize it. And I mean, like, clear from like a basketball, I mean, there's basketball, you know, where they can play basketball. There's basketball. Miracle Network.
Stop there and look at theirs because they installed it. I don't think it's the greatest of locations because it's on my kids.
Because somebody is going to go there.
Right, exactly.
And there's a whole purpose of this. And it would be dual purpose.
Debate around it. But stop up there and look at it. And because they even had.
Give you ideas of what.
They have sensory things where they do it. It's a dinosaur themed sensory things and they have some trails there. So.
I'm talking about teams for disabled kids. Like, you know, you have the Special Olympics. That's a one-time thing where kids just get to enjoy. But just imagine being a kid and not being able to play basketball on the team. And, you know, I'm going to be unpolitical here, but they will never play on a basketball team in high school and middle school. It's just not going to happen in a regular setting. They need teams of their own where they can compete with each other. It's an important, a core value in life where you have peers and you can have playful competitions and all that stuff. And these kids never will have that opportunity because of their disabilities. And, and I'm not, like I said, it's a twofold here because I look at myself now. And I was like looking at Nutter Ford Playground and the thought that I can have to take my kids there just bothered me. And parents would be able to bring parents. But I can't walk on grills. I can't walk on sand. I can't walk on snow. It has to be a solid surface or my brain doesn't register it. And my leg just like falls over. So unless I have a solid surface, sometimes on gravel, it's not exactly right. My leg collapses. So that is why I was thinking about this. And, you know, it's just not the kids.
And if we get with Mike Book, there are, I know theirs was mostly paid for by grant money.
And that's the other thing. That's the other thing. I mean, our perfect thing would be like, but like my vision is what we use on like a high school track. You know, it's soft, you know, it's flexible.
And I don't want to overstep, but that's probably something, it would be good to get with Mike Book because they've already, they've done, and Mike's really good at helping the school system.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I think it's something that we need to get together and.
Yeah, he knows where the grants are.
Already reached out to Mr. Mitchell, who was here about the wetlands and all. Danny and I have already met with the pony league. So, you know, we've already been in contact. We visited last week. So we could go, I think I could even go over and take a look at the.
We have the whole entire field there. And over on this very end, you have the little, the little tee ball field. But between there and up to the rest of the school is nothing but a huge field.
And drain each way.
And that would be all.
But there isn't grant money and Mike knows where that's at. So Mike's really good.
And there's community involvement also that people want to do things like this that make a change. And like I said, it's just not for the kids. It's for the parents and the grandparents too. Like if I have a grandchild right now or a child, I cannot go to a field. And I could go to that, if that was like set up that I could park and I could use my cane and walk, yeah, I mean, my kids.
Like an accessible path that's going to.
Exactly.
Cover the whole thing that would get you to all parts of that.
Yeah, they are almost like a track system. And I just think it's something that our whole entire community kind of needs.
Now, there is, there is money for it.
I can't think of a better place than where our highest population of disabilities are. And so for my New Year's resolution and wishes, that is something that I really, really want to focus on as a school board and as a community member is to get together with whoever we need to and really push and do something up there, starting with the drain.
Okay.
So.
Well, like I said, it's already a motion on the drain engine.
Well, the pony league just contacted me as I was leaving and that's one of the reasons why, you know, I sent my car and I was thinking, I've thought about it all week too. So, and then when they just contacted me, their new president just did, I, and I told them, I said, I was on my way here and that there were some things I wanted to discuss with them as well. So I just think it's something that needs to be done in our whole camp. I wanted to bring that up.
Okay. Anything else? Moved down to approval consent items. Is there a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bus driver promissory note.
Make a motion to approve the payment for Dwayne Prophet.
Second.
And James Sendling.
So moved and seconded for Dwayne Prophet, James Sendling. And we see a lot of these, so we should be, are we in good shape, bus driver?
We're moving in a very good direction, yes.
We are. It's been more positive.
And I noticed, can you, really quick, since we're in discussion, I noticed something came out today where the state was lowering the standard for bus drivers?
It's the recertification for those that have been out of the cycle for two, for two different cycles, recertifying. So it'll make it easier for.
Rehiring.
Yeah, say we have somebody that's retired, wants to come back to work after three years. We could, we could go through some retraining and get them recertified relatively easy. The state will have some involvement in that. Even out-of-state candidates that are recertified in another state, it's, it's an option. It's things we discussed over, you know, a period of time just because it's been hard to get some people, like, for example, we may get somebody that wants to be recertified to be a bus driver that's a custodian right now, that used to be a bus driver or works for the maintenance department, gives us another option to be able to get another substitute out of her. That does make a difference.
Because I always get irritated when they drop standards.
They're not compromising.
Okay, that's all I would ask. Okay. Anything further? All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Funding for wetland located in Nutter Ford Elementary School, and I'm the one that asked that place to, I guess the only difference on that is if I could just get the motion to, to stay up to $5,000. And the reason being, I'm all for, it's probably going to take all $5,000. I just don't want to write a check to the school for $5,000. They use $3,000. So basically, you know, up to $5,000 that we'll give them, I don't, you know, it's kind of parsing the words, but I don't want to just give the $5,000. They only spend three.
I'm making a motion to approve a new for the wetlands up to $5,000.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. No old business. Policy updates. We have four policy updates. We might as well take them individually. Policy 2206 purchasing, and we discussed this before this, this is mirroring what state.
Yeah, our current purchasing policy did not have the same verbiage that the state policy had. They, they had a section in their policy for emergency purchasing. We discovered that we really did not have that in ours, so we added that. And it was actually verbiage that was sent to us by the State Department, the same as their policy.
So it's mirroring their policy.
Yes. And it really came about because of the issues we're having getting food, the food scarcities that were happening.
So if there's food you need to quickly purchase.
Right. Sometimes it's available and the next day it may not be available. And we're finding that people are, or places are purchasing all that they have. If they have the opportunity to purchase it, then they are tending to wake them out and then out. So, but that was the intent initially.
Well, it is correct. If we got to get them fed, we got to get them fed.
Can I ask a question about purchasing? This, this, I feel like this is probably my second meeting ever. I know, what about relationships with like personal and family relationships and purchasing? What type of rules do we have on that?
Like if you're, if the purchasing director is trying to use a.
A best friend or a family member.
Yes. It would be an ethical concern.
Okay, so how is that handled? I mean, like, you know, we have a whole community, we're buying from them, and all of a sudden we're purchasing from one place and it's your next door neighbor or your best friend. I have an issue with that. And I just wanted to know what we have in place as a board and as taxpayers.
I would say, I would say to your point, if they're not putting out a bid, you know, then that's.
I'm not calling to tell you what the bid is.
Well, that's, that's unethical. It's absolutely unethical.
Absolutely. And if we would know that to be the truth for sure or had the facts on that, then it would absolutely be something.
No, I think.
Most business, certain nature, send out and advertise to be bid out, so therefore.
So it would have to be an advertisement.
Well, let me tell you my opinion on that. See, it's very convenient depending on the item. And I ran into this for eight years. And, and I don't buy that because, you know, they'll say, well, that's a single item. A bag of, a box of bags is only $20. Well, within 12 months, if you're buying $100,000 worth of bags, that needs to be out. But just because you put in an order for 10 boxes, that doesn't.
You're talking about stringing and that's obviously stringing is illegal.
What is that word?
Stringing.
Stringing, that's what I was accused of saying before.
Where you're buying small amounts of seeds, I think.
Whereas if you put it out to bid, someone else would have gotten the bid for overall, but you keep buying smaller amounts to string.
Well, I like to start looking at a little bit of that. I don't know if you're the person, but I really do feel that I'm hearing one name we're buying from. I didn't hear bids. I have people in the community telling me different things. And I'm not going to be responsible for that because we as a board, you know, taxpayers, dollars, not who gets the best friend trophy. And that's just, and so it's something that I want to look into when it comes to our purchasing. This is not new. It's been probably on my agenda since the very first board meeting I ever came to. And I think what we do, we go from highs to lows. We kind of don't look at it anymore, then all of a sudden, people start throwing it in your face. And that happens with a lot of different issues. But I think we need to check our purchasing and what we're doing and how it's going out. And listen, if someone does have a family member or if they have a friend, those are the items that must be put out, in my opinion. I don't care how much they're worth, but we need to save ourselves here. I don't care if it's a $25 football.
They need to sharpen their pencil just like everybody else does.
That's right. We need, I don't care what the amount is or the total. I mean, if it's a $5 hammer, if you're going to put it out, if you're going to start buying that and your friend wants to bid on it, then it needs to go out on a certified bid to protect us. And I don't care what the state policy is. I think as board members and keepers of the tax dollars, that's our responsibility.
I agree.
Before we, before we go making, you know, saying things that maybe aren't, we don't all truly understand, would it not be better if we have the person doing the purchasing and the person who's handling the money give us as a board and as a group an oversight as to what actually takes place?
Well, mine, mine, they have done that before.
Well, maybe it's time.
They bought us a big sheet of paper.
Maybe it's time for a refresher.
They said that $5,000 and all that.
Maybe it's time for a refresher. Then maybe at the next meeting, the purchasing person and our gentleman handling the money now, you got to give us some idea.
And what we can do is we can do a work session right after the first of the year, sit down, have the purchasing here and give specific examples. Okay, here's what we purchased here. How did we arrive at purchasing from that?
And I like to know what we're paying or who we're buying.
But what you do is, is you have it, you say on this particular one, how did we arrive at that? And they should be able to have a bid and back that up. So we can do that as a.
And we want to buy local land and we bought, we had a vehicle that we bought that was cheaper another place, but not by much. And so we turned around and refused that and we bought it locally, which was fun.
Listen, now, now, I'm not going to throw the lady card out there. The two meetings before we as a board did that and went back to Harry Greens, we also had an asphalt bid that I said the guy in Clarksville is $2,000 cheaper. And oh no, we have to go with the lowest bid. And that was two more meetings before we did it for Harry Greens. And believe me, my point is, is I want them all to stay local. And I agree 100% with what we did with Harry Greens. I'm not saying that. I think $2,000 or $200, we should keep it local, pure.
Well, there'll be, there'll be a mount that it gives out. In other words, if somebody's.
But that is why I use the word.
You know, $5,000, you know.
That is the word, convenient.
Well, let's, let's set it for a work session on purchasing for.
Okay. So money, money was, I mean, like I said, how bills are paid and all this, nobody knows how the bills.
Yeah, and what it is, is what it comes down to is, is I understand your concerns, but I also don't want to sit here in this meeting where it wasn't noticed and debate something when the person we need to ask those questions to.
I'm not asking any questions or.
No, that's what I'm saying.
I'm not asking any one of them.
That's what I'm saying.
What I am saying is.
But we're saying, talking about purchasing. The purchasing person isn't here. Let's get the purchasing person here, then we'll have a work session.
Because when we start purchasing, you know.
Well, the budget.
Budgeting.
Right. So let's do that in January. I understand the concerns, but I want to make sure the people we need to ask the questions because it's not fair to ask questions like.
Don't ask the general questions on specific.
Right, exactly. Right, yeah. But, you know, he's, yeah, he, he shouldn't have to answer for that person. So we'll, we'll make sure that they're there sometime in January. Any, we haven't had a motion on the purchasing.
Yes, yes.
Motion and a second?
Yeah. My only, I only have one comment is the only, the only concern I have is, which we might be able to address in that work session, is a cap on the, the emergency powers because it says here that the chief executive officer, purchasing director, or appointed designee shall issue prior written approval for purchase in emergency situation. And I get that, but that doesn't limit, that doesn't tell me how much they're going to go. You know what I mean? It doesn't say you can, you can, you know, purchase a million dollars of football.
Well, how about we add that into the work session? Because what we really need to know is from, from someone like Chris, what do you normally?
A normal cap or an average cap.
What we're going to need to know is when we have to buy this food quickly.
Right.
What's the most we ever spent?
Right.
When we have that number and then work down.
And I'm not disparaging that, but what I'm saying is the wording in the policy doesn't specifically, you know, pull out, we're only giving emergency authorization for purchasing food.
Exactly.
It's, it's emergency authorization for purchasing.
But we need to amend that policy we just approved.
Probably, but I think we could, but I'd like to know what an average number is first.
100%.
Is this a.
Same thing. I'm seeing that. It's probably a wrong.
Yeah.
That's a bit in our system. We can bring it back.
It doesn't say you can, you can, you know, purchase a million dollars of football.
How about we add that into the work session? Because what we really need to know is from, from someone like Chris, what.
I'd like to come up with a normal cap, like average cap.
What we're going to need to know is when we have to buy this food quickly, what's the most we ever spent? When we have that number and then work down.
And I'm not disparaging that, but what I'm saying is, the wording in the policy doesn't specifically, you know, pull out, we're only giving emergency authorization for purchasing food.
Exactly.
It's, it's emergency authorization for purchasing.
We need to amend that policy we just approved.
Probably, but I think we could, but I'd like to know what an average number is first.
I just 100%.
Is this time? Yeah. Go ahead, if we're going to do this in January, if you just want to table this in the meantime.
Yeah.
Okay. Will this be, will it cause any undue hardship on anything at this point? I mean, are there any emergency, well, I see emergencies, or maybe one more people see it, right, right.
Well, I don't have, I don't have a problem. The reality is, if you have some large purchase like that, we can do emergency.
I think the state policy probably would cover us anyway.
Okay.
I think if we had some emergency tomorrow, I could call Clayton, contact you all and get that approved. We just needed it in a local policy, but I think the state policy covers us regardless anyway.
Okay.
It just wasn't in our local policy.
I don't have any issue. Let's go ahead, I mean, what I would suggest is go ahead and approve it, and then we debate it at the, when we have the work session, if we want to amend it, we can just, we just place it back on the agenda.
Right, that would be fine. I would have no problem with that.
So there has been a motion?
Uh huh. Who's your second?
I'll second.
Michael's seconded, I do, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Policy 3202, teacher cover planning period updated. Do you want to give us the highlights real quick of what's updated?
Well, this one, we took to the planning committee or the policy committee, and we had two comments, and it was really for the increase, and it's really to compensate teachers currently working that are doing a lot of covering. And initially, they were getting $20 to cover for a planning period, and we wanted to increase that. That was brought to us by a group of teachers, and we had a group session, a work session on what can we do because of, you know, all the covering and the shortage of teachers, and this was a request. So we thought it was reasonable. We checked with other counties, they do pay. I think this is probably a little bit more maybe.
And I think we've debated that before, and I'm, I'm for it if we have to cover because, I mean, we've had a lot of covering because of COVID, as long as we're under the understanding as that ramps down, that we go back to what we did before of not having so many cover planning periods.
Well, I, I, that's what I'm saying. I think it'll get to a point where everybody's like, well, I'll give up my planning period because I want to go make another $40 or whatever the amount is.
This one is really for those day, like, like during the day, like in emergency.
When you can't get them served, right, yeah.
We have a different form that you guys have to approve if we're covering a planning or waiving a planning for the whole year.
Okay, so this isn't that, this is just the as needed, that day.
As needed one day thing.
I understand, and that's, and they really, they should be compensated more because they came to work that day not knowing that they would have to cover.
I mean, sometimes we're, we're having three or four teachers covering a classroom because we don't have a person, and they go in and spend their planning.
I understand that, so I'm, I'm good with that.
I'll make a motion to it, please.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Policy 3212, it's the employment of substitute teachers in areas of critical need shortages. We've addressed this before, correct?
It's an annual update that has to go to the state board in order to, if we put a sub in currently that's a retired teacher, in order them to work additional days, they have to be listed on here as a critical need.
And if we didn't, we'd be in trouble.
If we didn't, we have to pull them out and put another teacher.
So the only question that I have is about the six comments that voiced ethical concerns having teachers substitute in counseling positions.
Well, we addressed that today.
Okay.
We no longer are, when a counselor is out, they're putting in no sub required, and unless we can get a counselor back in that position, that school will not have a counselor that day.
Okay.
Because we had that happen just recently, a counselor went in. Or what happens is, is when a teacher or counselor calls off, they put it in the system, and we only have a couple certified counselors that are retired. It goes to those two, if they don't take it, it goes to that main list, and it just calls a body. It just goes down.
And if they're not counseling, they don't need to be in.
Well, if they're not trained counselors, they don't need to be in that position.
And so we put it, we told them today, if the counselor calls off, they put it in as no sub required. And if we have a counselor available, then we're going to send them out. We're going to do it because it was an issue.
All right. Okay, we'll answer this. Well, while we're there, I was at a retired teacher's house the other day getting, well, Georgia Griffith's house, getting a picture framed. And while I was there, she got no less than 18 calls to sub. And, but it didn't say Harrison County Board of Education, you know, calling her out, so it was just Clarksville, Clarksville, West Virginia, same number calling to be a sub. And I, I think for these people, it ought to identify that it's the Harrison County Board of Education calling on this number rather than Clarksville, West Virginia. And then, and I mean, I listened, her phone kept ringing, and she was trying to explain to me about bringing this picture.
Tech should be, with the company we use, should be able to, to change that to Harrison.
Yeah, she just should come out and say Harrison County Board of Education.
It should be Harrison County.
Yeah.
Yeah. And because, because there's so many robo calls and, and you know.
That should work.
Your car warranty and all that stuff there. So, you know, she just, right, it was the same.
Yeah, I didn't know, you know, that's too many of these texts.
And she said, you don't know who it is. So you saw they don't want to always answer the phone, but if it was the Harrison County Board, and they want to go work that day.
That's the first I've heard that.
Yeah.
We don't deal with that, yeah.
Get the picture from, and I was going, gee, many Christmases. One right after the, I know there was no less than 18 calls, and I was only there for probably 45 minutes.
I believe that.
So just some way to.
All right, is there a motion on this?
Make a motion to approve the final policy update for 3212, employment status of substitute teachers in areas of critical need shortages.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Final policy 3309, overtime compensatory time for non-exempt employees updated.
The only change that we made to that was if you look at page, I believe it's page two, we had paraprofessionals working six and a half hour day, it was changed to seven